Call the order for the meeting of the 208 Board of Education.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, could we roll call, please?
Mr. Durkin.
He's on the phone. He's here.
Yeah, Mr. Durkin's calling tonight.
Here. Mr. Durkin's here.
Here.
Well.
Yes.
Yes. We have recognitions this evening, Dr. Freitas.
Yes, we do. Good evening, honorable board members. I would like to recognize a very special student today because not only did Joshua Nelson earn a five, he got a perfect score on the AP Computer Science A exam. That means Joshua Nelson got every single question correct. In 2021, approximately 134,000 students took the AP Computer Science Principal exam and approximately 80,000 students took the AP Computer Science A exam. Less than one half of 1% of all test takers in both exams received a perfect score. We are so proud of you, Joshua, and we're so proud of Ms. Sandy Chika, his teacher. Ms. Chika does everything at RB. She's in several committees. She's our system director. She's a math teacher. She's a computer science teacher. She is fantastic. And I know she's one of the reasons why Joshua Nelson received a perfect score. Joshua, come on up. Let's give it up for Joshua. Let's hold it for the press.
You're in the family.
One for mom.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Does that mean we have our recognitions this evening? Thank you. Do we have any visitor statements here tonight? Anyone have visitor statements? And moving on to reports from the Student Association, please. Come on down.
Hello.
Hello. I'd like to introduce myself since I couldn't be here last time. I'm Sam Royer. I am the Vice President of the Student Association Exec Board. Unfortunately, it can only be me and Chloe tonight, so we will be the ones talking. Talking about the things that generally go on at RB, the past month has had a lot to offer. We had several spirit days, including a spirit week for Hispanic Heritage Month, the Fine Arts Week, World Smile Day, two new clubs with Bowling Club and Cyber Security Club.
What was the first one, I'm sorry?
Bowling Club.
Bowling.
Bowling Club.
Thank you.
AST continues to meet and go to Cantada. Best buddies, math team, and helping pals are all busy. Coming up on November 3rd to November 6th is the Fall Play, EBA. Fall athletics are starting to wind down as teams go into playoffs and intersectionals, and winter sports are starting to ramp up and people are getting excited for the seasons.
Okay, so going to what SA is doing. First, we have on Friday, Mr. Mann's running the Leadership Workshop that's going to LT, run by IDSA, so me, including like, I think, two or three other exec board members are going to go in that, so we're super excited about that. Then up next, we have our blood drive, on Tuesday, number first, which is the number first of three blood drives of the year, which we're hoping to get about 60 student staff donations, which one pint saves about three lives, so it's really great. And we run the blood drive through the company Vitalment, and we were enrolled in the RB, um, the high school program. So at the end of each year, we qualify them for scholarships, and so it's a really great program. Um, in addition, SA is busy planning road cards for veterans, previously cards for troops, but this year, the USO wasn't accepting holiday cards. So we kind of decided to go more local, and we're doing the Heinz Hospital and possibly Cantada, the retirement home. And then closer to the end of November, we're going to run Thanksgiving baskets, which is where clubs and sports and even classrooms can collect everything for Thanksgiving meal, including a $20 gift card for a turkey. And we pull these baskets together and we donate them to CSS in Brookfield. And then also for CSS, we're going to be running Santa Ananas this year, which we haven't done in a couple years, but really excited to get it started up again. And then, of course, our annual coat and blanket drive, which was so successful last year. We got so many coats, blankets, hats, gloves donated, so we're really excited about that.
Great. Thank you. You guys are busy, as always.
So are your baskets with Leola, with their program, or?
Um, it's through the CSS, that's in Brookfield. So we put them all together ourselves and we donate through them. We do about 20 baskets each year.
Okay. And when are, when does all that due? When do the?
Um, I think the baskets are due November 16th.
It could be helpful. Doctors Kinkis last year included the basket and the coat drive information in our Friday update.
Yeah, maybe.
Be helpful for all of us to.
Maybe as a work, we can make a basket.
Okay.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Volunteer to keep a basket.
If you volunteer, you're something, happy to contribute.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
There's no president's report this evening. Actually, I will make a comment that the, um, that the application period for the new Board of Education member has closed, and we will spend time in closed session tonight reviewing those applications. I know there's been some questions as to the status. We are hopefully going to make a decision in the very near future. Superintendent's report, Dr. Kinkis.
Thank you. Superintendent's report for tonight. The life safety bond sale for the HVAC, which is going to be replacing the HVAC units for a cafeteria and library project scheduled to occur the summer of '23, was finalized on Wednesday, October 29th. We did come in slightly lower on the interest rates than what was presented by Ms. Hennessy at the first meeting in October. Ms. Matanik can provide a little background on that in her Assistant Superintendent report. The district-wide communications survey will go out in November. The meeting packet includes more information and the district goals under the discussion item. But that is going out the first week of Septem- uh, November, excuse me. Teaching and Learning Committee is a joint committee established under the new collective bargaining agreement, met on October 6th, to discuss and review the job description of the new divisional positions, institute days, agendas, formats, and also the panorama, new dashboard, student dashboard, as well as star data and academic interventions for the current school year. You'll hear a little bit about that tonight during the principal's report and when the administrative team comes up to speak about their benchmark data. And the goal is to have the new divisional position posted by November 7th so that we can hopefully bring candidate to the, candidates to the board at the first meeting in January. The placement exam for the class of 2027 was on Saturday, October 29th, at 8:00 a.m. Superintendent Advisory Council's curriculum. The last meeting, the board approved course proposals and fees, so no new updates. Facilities Advisory, this advisory council will convene as soon as there is progress on the design and bid documents for the HVAC units. Finance Advisory, there is a Finance Advisory Council meeting scheduled prior to the November 15th meeting to review the audit, levy, and enrollment projections. No new updates on personnel, policy, or sale or lease of land. And that's it for the superintendent report for October 25th.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, moving on to Dr. Matanik.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the board with information through the month of September, which represents 25% of our current fiscal year. On Board Book Page 7, the monthly summary report shows that the total operating revenue for the month was $560,971, with 41% coming from evidence-based funding, 27% coming from local revenue, primarily the Airmark grant that we received, and 24% coming from federal and state reimbursement. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,148,874, with 87% towards salary and benefits, 5% for building supplies, and 3% for special education tuition. Moving on to Page 9, if you could jump there. The summary of revenue shows that the district has received 5.6% of our budgeted operating revenue for the year. This percent is much lower to this time last year and much lower than a normal fiscal year due to the delay in receiving property taxes. The next page, the summary of expenditures, shows that the district has spent 28% of the budgeted expenditures, which is where we were at at this time last fiscal year. Going back to Board Book Page 8, you'll see that the district will, is currently deficit spending and will continue to deficit spend for the next three months due to the delay in property taxes. Later on in the agenda, I'm recommending a working cash loan to cover the ad fund and debt service payments that will happen in the near future. In all, if you can see on the cash page summary, which I believe is on Board Book Page 11, you'll see that the district will need to loan or use $5,291,000 from working cash fund until the district receives its property taxes, which will temporarily leave $2,883,321 in the working cash fund. So again, it's important that we have our reserve in working cash as well as the surplus from last fiscal year from our budget so that we can continue to pay our bills without having to get a tax anticipation warrant or going out for a loan. As always, I've included the statement of revenue and expenditures, both from the board accounts and the activity accounts for the month of September. And then additionally, this month, I've provided the paid quarterly building rental report, which is on Board Book Page 33. This is for the first quarter, which is July 1st through September 30th of 2022. This only includes paid rentals during this time period. As you can see, the surplus for this quarter was $14,221.75. This surplus is used to offset future expenditures for the upkeep of facilities. This amount is definitely up from last year, which was around $9,000. So this indicates that the district has returned to pre-COVID rental levels. And then lastly, Dr. Kinkis had referenced the life safety bond sale. I included the kind of summary for you that we received from Elizabeth Hennessy from Raymond James. And you can see that the sale of the life safety bonds was with an all-in true interest cost of 4.53%. This cost is lower than the cost that was presented back in July to the board. That rate was 4.65%. So Liz Hennessy really did a great job of watching the market for us and being able to lock that in for us.
Page 39, Mayor.
In our, in our bond rating, how high is our bond rating currently?
Uh, AA+.
AA+, is that, is that the highest that we?
AAA+ is the highest, but we cannot qualify for AAA+ due to our median economic income level and property value level. So AA+ is the highest that we can achieve for our, the district our size.
Well, good job.
Thank you. And that concludes my report tonight, unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? I think it was publicly reported that tax bill should be posted on November 15th at this point. So that is a positive, I think, for the.
What is posted?
Available to pay.
Oh. They're going to mail them too?
They'll mail them too, yes. I don't know what the mail drop date would be, though.
The Township Treasurer does anticipate receiving a little bit of revenue in December from escrow, but they don't know, they weren't able to estimate exactly how much we would receive, which is why I'm recommending the transfer of receiving nothing, just in case nothing comes into the district.
So would it be like, the due date would be like 30 days from the date you said?
Yes.
So the due date will be mid-December?
Correct.
Are you done with your report? So one of the first things that will be, not necessarily an impact on the school district, but this will be one of the first times we're going to have to generate a levy with no property tax information. We're going to have to go off of what we received in March. And I know, you know, part of Kristen's calculation, or usually you get some type of numbers from the Township Treasurer to give us an idea of what we're basing REAV off of. And so that will be all, right, Kristen? I think that was one of your concerns?
Yes, I should have that information. I think November, it's anywhere from November 1st through November 15th, our board meeting is the 15th. So I'm hopeful that it'll come in a little early and I'll be able to provide an accurate first read at the November meeting, but there is a chance that that might not be possible.
So let's talk, you know, just our normal operations. You may see a levy on the 15th that's different from the levy you're going to have to approve in December. Because there is no time to prolong it. It's due before the end of the month in December.
And we have one meeting in December?
Right, one meeting in December, one meeting in November due to the holidays.
Any more comments or questions, Ellen?
No.
It'll be some good discussion. Moving on to the principal's report, and with leave of the board, I'd like to ask the student advisors to go at the top of the principal's report, since I think actually Dr. Freitas and our student advisors did a nice job of integrating their reports this month. So thank you very much.
So this is the end of quarter reflection. The end of the quarter has been full with tests, quizzes, and exams, but even with all the assignments, I personally managed to finish off the quarter with good grades, and I'm pretty sure most of my grade, and as well as the school, has also. I made a point in my daily schedule to study and to complete any homework assignments to make sure my grades were all correct and up to date. I know lots of my peers were stressed out because of the amount of tests on the same day, but everyone made it through the quarter. I would suggest to all students at RB to take time for themselves, whether it be 15 minutes or an hour, to just decompress while studying, because sometimes you need a break, and I wish everyone good luck with this new quarter. Moving on to school culture and operations. This week has been full of amazing and helpful visits from college representatives. By having these opportunities during the school day, it's super convenient to learn about colleges that are usually hours away. I encourage seniors to take advantage of these meetings because you get to learn so much about different colleges and what they have to offer. And you can speak one-on-one to your admissions counselor at that university. A huge thank you to the Student Services Department for making these meetings possible. Another thank you to all the college reps for taking the time to come speak with students and broadening our knowledge of the university. And lastly, activities and athletics. Girl swimming and diving is almost coming to an end, but we have shown great competitiveness at our latest meet. Conference was held at Oswego High School on October 22nd. Junior varsity took fourth place in their category and varsity took third. Our sectional team consists of a small group of swimmers and divers heading to Hinsdale Central on November 5th for the meet we have all worked so hard for. After sectionals, the only meet left will be state, and we'll send swimmers and divers and relay teams all the way through.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As the quarter comes to a close last week, I would like to say that the quarter definitely had its ups and downs, especially as a senior, but it ended well. Firstly, I would like to talk about YC2, or Young Community Changemakers. It's a program created by the Community Memorial Foundation to introduce philanthropy to high school students. And I was a part of the program last school year, and it taught me a lot of valuable lessons. And Tom Fekman, a program officer, will be handing out applications tomorrow during all lunches, and they're due on November 23rd of this year. And I encourage all interested juniors and seniors to apply. And additionally, as college application season is carrying on, I recommend all seniors visit schools if they haven't already. And a good resource that I took advantage of was college flying programs for low-income students or students of color. And it's a great way to immerse yourself in the school campus and a great way to demonstrate interest to admissions officers. And I encourage all my peers to take advantage of this as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Palina.
Thank you.
What is a, what is a flying program?
So it's, um, you complete a separate application and you just go to the campus for two or three days and you take some courses there, or they give you information about their admissions. And it's usually, I think, like, all expenses paid. Sometimes it's not, but.
Were you updating us on the ILMEA as well?
Right, so ILMEA is the, um, the music department competition. And Saturday, November 5th, is the Junior Concert Fest. Saturday, November 12th, is the Junior/Senior Jazz Fest. And Saturday, November 19th, is the Senior Concert Fest. And I wish all my peers good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions for the student advisors?
Yeah, I noticed you're calling them a fest. They're not like a concert where people come? How is the fest different?
I'm not actually sure. I'm not a part of the music program, but I imagine it's more of like an all-day thing. Maybe that's why they call it a fest.
Is it not a competition?
It's a holiday event where students perform and showcase their musical talents.
It's more of a showcase. It's not a competition or anything.
Yeah, it's not show up at 7:00 p.m. for a show, I think.
Yeah.
Like, and who comes to that?
Um, you have students, you know, students, teachers, you know, coaches, people involved in the, in the music program.
Okay.
Sure, parents.
Thank you both for your, for your reports today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. Dr. Freitas, do you want to continue?
Good evening, honorable board members. You know, first quarter came to a conclusion just a week or two ago, and quickly, and I would describe this first nine weeks as, you know, we finished strong and everybody's been in a good mood. You know, students are engaging, are excellent, you know, teaching and learning is moving forward. You know, have a fantastic admin team that is really leading this building, you know, and our school to, to achieve even higher. So, you know, the first nine weeks are in the book, and it's really been a great start to the 22-23 school year. Parent-teacher conferences, firstly, I would like to thank my coaching operations committee, David Weishaw, Kristi Hughes, Dr. Matanik, Kristi Tappert, and Dave Mann, one of our assistant principals, you know, for really supporting in parent-teacher conferences. We were able to, uh, to get our staff some rainbow cones, great ice cream during dinner, and we celebrated a taquesa. We had, we had a cook come and prepare, you know, food for our staff, and we supported our local business in doing that. And we had a great time. The tacos were absolutely fantastic. And there's no way I could have done this by myself. I have an excellent, you know, committee and excellent team here in the building. Panorama, all teachers have access now, and they've begun to use the data to inform their practice. The ultimate goal is for students to grow academically and star so as to be best prepared for the SAT their junior year. So teachers have access, we have the data there, and now they're using it. You know, I know some teachers have included, for example, practice SAT problems in the curriculum. They looked at the score, maybe I could do some practice. So teachers are really reflecting it and using it. As far as our district equity leadership team, we have our second meeting tomorrow, and we'll continue moving our objectives forward. For school coaching operation, we've installed a new camera system. Right now, our new camera system could record 24 hours. I mean, it's really neat. You could use your smartphone, you could track people, you have your school map. It is absolutely fantastic for safety and security purposes. And we've also installed a vape detector, and we've got some hints. And students have been held accountable. Again, you know, I want to thank my admin team. You know, we're going to move more, so students are learning.
Yeah, I got to be careful.
We got to make better choices, and that's what we want. We want to deter bad behavior and encourage students, right, to make the best choices possible.
Do the students know that you've installed vape detectors?
I mean, you know, it kind of goes around, right, that we've installed new systems. I'd say some students know, you know, and some students, you know, may not, but, I mean, people know. People see stuff working, being installed, and you know, and then, of course, right? I mean, when we call a student or two, and they have friends and they share, and, but, um, you know, right? Kids know our camera. We have the vape detectors and, you know, right? We want them to, to make good choices, and that's all.
I mean, it's just my biased opinion, but I think it would be fair to make an announcement that with the new cameras, there's also vape detectors, so make wise decisions, FYI, right?
I mean, vaping isn't the school handbook that it's not allowed at school, bro.
Right, but I think we probably, I mean, if we've had cameras that are potentially could catch people, I think we should be very transparent about it and say, and by the way, make good choices.
I think we talked about the vape detectors here at a couple of meetings, too. Not saying the same students are watching a board meeting.
No, but, you know, your student announcement might be, you know, or, I don't know. I just think that probably should be said, because if somebody got caught in one of those and, you know, and goes home, and the parents would be like, I didn't know you had surveillance on my ki- or whatever, my kid. It's, it's like a red light camera, or it's like a speed camera in a, in a neighborhood you don't expect to see that, and you pass a car, and then all of a sudden, a ticket comes to the house. I mean, I think we can be a little more transparent.
It's posted. I mean, we could, maybe include it in the announcements, but it's, every student has to sign every year for the handbook, which has all the infractions in it, so.
But still, we would punish somebody, or there would be consequences if they got caught. I think if we're going to be actively looking, I think we should say it.
Maybe in your principal's report that you sent home, you could remind parents of it.
Of course. But it's not like a camera on person.
No, 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 no.
Like a smoke detector.
Think about, yeah, a different type of smoke detector. There's not, we're not watching them, you know. It picks up, you know, it picks up vapor from the, from the device.
I, I just think, you know, all students know, hey, it's around here, don't do it. Don't even try, because there's sensors in the building, and that's a good thing. Well, we should ask the student, our advisors, our student advisors. Would you feel a little more comfortable if there was just a general announcement saying with the new cameras, there's also vape detectors, or does it not matter?
Is there a sense that there are none of already, or not?
To be honest, I'm not really sure. I feel like a lot of people know about new cameras, but I, I guess people just don't, I don't know.
If they don't vape, they're not worried.
Right.
All the time for the neck uncomfortable position, right?
What do you think, Palina?
Well, I think the people who vape know, and then some others know, but I, I don't know if I get the sense that the entire school knows.
Are these portable? Do they go from?
It's fixed. It's a fixed.
It looks like a smoke detector.
As a parent, I'm perfectly okay with my kid not knowing that it's here, because if he does do it, then it's like, dude, you signed the thing, you shouldn't be vaping. Like, I wouldn't want for him to plan to go vape elsewhere, because that's where he's not going to get caught. I'd rather.
You know, they're, you're going to find another place to do it if you're planning on doing that.
Right, if you're going to do it, you're going to do it, right, so.
If you know they're there, you'll choose to.
I don't know. I don't think it's infringing on anyone's rights.
Take it into consideration.
I guess I think we should be transparent.
I'd be curious to know what, like, Mr. Mannan and others are thinking from a security and prevention standpoint. So I think it's a, it's an interesting question.
Continuing in my, in my report, incoming freshman placement exam is this coming Saturday, October 29th. From 8:11:15, there are some diverse learners that could go all the way to 1:00 p.m. as they get some time for accommodations. Activities in athletics, we have a boys' cross country. We're in sectionals this Saturday, October 29th, where Kane Lynn High School. And then the following week, Saturday, November 5th, will be state at Detwiler Park in Peoria. For more information on athletics and the state series, you can follow the IHSa.org website. We have our Fall Play coming up. This year, we are hosting Emma. It'll happen in the auditorium from November 3rd to the 5th, from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. And on Sunday, November 6th, from 2:00 to 4:30. Ticket prices, $10 for adults and $5 for students and seniors. And as mentioned before, you know, I'm really excited about the new opportunities we have to engage our students, the Coffee and Tea Club, the Cyber Security Club, Bowling, and the Sulfonic Orchestra Club. And a big shout out to Mr. Dave Mann, Assistant Principal, for Student Affairs, who really leads this and makes this happen. I would like to wish all of our Bulldogs a safe and happy Halloween. And that concludes my principal's report.
You think, Dr. Freitas, is it time for the administrative team to come up with their?
Yes, and now I would like to introduce my administrative team for our annual school performance data presentation. I would like to first welcome, excuse me, here.
Attendance. Dave Mannan, attendance, and the rest six.
Yep, I'd like to welcome Mr. Dave Mannan and Mr. Brendan Curtin. Cool beginner presentation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening. Today, we're going to report out on our ADA, our average daily attendance, our engagement rate within extracurriculars, which includes activities side and the athletic side, and tell you kind of the participation overall, and then what we're doing this year to increase engagement on campus. So looking at our overall ADA that came in from last school year, the final number was 93.8%. Looking back at the previous year was 96.3, compared to marks like 95%. We knew we were going to take a dip due to, 2021 year was that hybrid year. So a lot more tenants, you know, online streaming, things like that, were home. And if they got sick, they're already home, so that helped out. This last year, we had quite a few students, especially in the winter months, right after the winter break ended, and a little bit during the break as well, but we saw a huge spike in COVID numbers there. And if you remember back, the quarantine protocols were a little bit different than they were now, so. And there was exclusions, or I should say, students were staying home or being quarantined if they were exposed as well, which is a little bit different now. So taking that all into consideration, the, the final number was 93.8%. Something also that occurred in January was the state amendment to a bill that allowed students to take five excused mental health days. And so those, they don't count against the student, they do count against our overall ADA at, at the school level. We had 478 students take 858 mental health days last year. And the protocol that we have, online, not in our handbook, online, is if a student does take a mental health day, And the protocol that we have aligned out of our handbook online is, uh, if a student does take a mental health day, it's, uh, you know, recorded to us and we need, we reach out, our student services office as well. Link them up with the council, see what's going on, see how we can assist in any way possible. Things that we're doing this year to continue to hit that 95% would be the daily review of unverified students. So we get a report, we look at it daily in regards to, um, if we have a blank absence, a cut, what have you. The deans are sending those notices out first thing in the morning from the previous day's attendance, so that's great. The deans have started a lunch attendance conference with students that have unverified markings or tardies. Um, that's been great to just have that communication with them right then and there after they eat their lunch in the lunchroom. Students that have reached the five and 10 absent absence threshold receive an automated message to from Skyward on the family access page. Uh, we'll continue to do automated emails when families, uh, if there's a cut or if a student doesn't report to class or attendance isn't taken, there's a notification that comes out with that. ALAP, formerly ALAP, now Tapestry is something that we lean on for students that have hit that 5% threshold already in regards to their current truancy. Um, and so whenever we see that, we link up with small teams through best offices, student services, and then, uh, see how we can align down what supports through Tapestry. Tapestry is the service that we have through, uh, the Regional Office of Education in West 40. Uh, we have two advocates that really are able to get, um, a lot of time with the students that have excessive attendance issues and try to figure out some goals, um, see what kind of supports they can wrap around them. And, uh, I know this year, the, well, when we ended up last year, it was all over 50 students plus. And so as the data comes out here for first quarter, we'll continue to work with small teams and identify students and how we can get some more support their way. Questions on ADA?
Quick question on that, um, ALAP, which is now Tapestry, it's an interesting name change. How long do we have the additional funding in place for those personnel, another year, correct?
Not an expert on that. I do know that a lot of it's coming from West 40, um, and that, and so I'd have to get back to you with that.
Kristen, you should be able to speak to that.
It was an ESR.
We we pay for some of that, but they also match at West 40, correct?
They did last year. I believe West 40 assumes most of the cost this year. I don't know what percentage off the top of my head, but they assume most of the cost moving forward.
We haven't included this in our interventions.
Okay.
They receive that funding from the state.
Okay. I mean, it seems like a positive program. We hear positive feedback. I just was, wanted to make sure it wasn't being curtailed anytime in the near future.
I believe the plan is to keep that rolling.
Yeah. All right, moving on to engagement, uh, engagement would be any participation in extracurriculars, so athletics activities on campus here. And, uh, we went up from last year, so we're at 65%. 2020, we're 669, 2019 was our highest mark at 72%. So, um, you know, pretty, pretty good considering we're still like in the pandemic air, like, season, as I would call it, from last year. With some students still being hesitant to to get involved, but, um, from their reports, student, um, advisors reports already, we have like four or five new clubs. So the creativity, thinking outside the box, like, hey, let's do coffee in the morning and just have a chat with, you know, having a sponsor line with that, that's great, you know, that's more involvement. Bowling club is just, you know, taken off, and so we had about 40 students participate. And those are 40 students that are not involved in any athletics or any other activities. So that's the exact group that we want to target to say, hey, what else can we do to, uh, get you involved here and then, um, get you kind of accustomed to different extracurriculars outside of the school days. So that's been great. Um, I'll go over some additional clubs and activities here in a second. But we continue to field requests from students and see how they can best fit their ideas in a club aspect. Looking at the participation by grade level, uh, if you look down there at the total, um, for one activity, so students are just in one activity or one sport, it's 452. Number of students in two activities or sports is 318, and this is great. So from last year, we had 221, so three or more activities is 301, which is great. So we went up from 221 to 301, uh, this year, excuse me, last year. The three-year historical percentage of students in extracurriculars, so this could be clubs or sports. Again, you could you could break it down by grade level, so 62% uh, seniors were engaged, 62% of juniors, 68% sophomores, 68% uh, freshmen, which gives us a 65% engagement rate overall.
And that's in at least one.
Yeah.
Program. It could be more than one, but it's at least one, right?
Yeah, and what's interesting, when you when you pull the data on this, which is an expansive report, we have students that are in seven or eight, too. So three or more is, you know, something that we just mark, but there's a lot more going on with students. I'd say, uh, city even get them out or over three, so that's good.
Is there any tracking? I know it's the hardest data to get, but tracking on the 35% who aren't participating with regard to, um, information on why?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's a great question. So what we do is, you know, we pull that out and we also sent out a survey to all the students during our grade level assemblies to see if they are involved or not, and then what we do is if we pull that student, those students out and then talk to them one-on-one and say, hey, what are you doing? What can we offer you?
And I'm certain there are a lot of great reasons for students not to be if they've got jobs.
Jobs.
Family situations. I'm just curious what kind of data we have.
Yeah.
Sounds like there's at least anecdotal, um, interventions.
What I'll do, too, at the end of the year report is I'll make sure to bring some of that data, too, so you can see, like, hey, here's what we identified at the, you know, first quarter marking, and then here's where we're at now and how many moved over in our participating. So we'll get that out, too. Athletics.
Sure, I'll touch on athletics. Just doubling back to what Dave mentioned, jumping from a 61% to a 65% is a significant jump and a trend in the right direction. We saw considerable increases in athletic participation with an increase of nearly 100 students participating in sports last year. Many of our athletic programs saw an increase of participation, however. Girls golf, cheerleading, wrestling, girls track and field, and boys lacrosse saw significant increases last year. I'm confident that we'll continue on this trend for the current school year as we've conducted or offered two levels for girls golf this past season. Two levels for POMs, added a fourth level for boys soccer with the JV two level. We also look to implement girls wrestling this winter. When you combine those additional opportunities for our students with an increased social media presence, our upcoming future Bulldog Night, more frequent offseason conditioning activities, and evolving summer athletic camp experiences, I expect our numbers to increase, uh, throughout the course of this year as well. That pretty much wraps up where we're at athletically. Again, I think we're, um, on the right path. We're not where we want to be, but again, um, significant increase from what it looked like last year.
The bowling club goes two years with high numbers. Is that would be the next recommendation for a sport? Where would shift from a club to a sport? Is that typically how that worked? That's how it worked with lacrosse, correct?
We did that with lacrosse, yeah. It started out volunteer sponsor. Uh, we were able to get some community donations, bought the equipment, then they competed at like a JV level, but still under the activity umbrella. And then once we saw that engagement level consistent, um, after that, two years, then it moved over to a sport.
The bowling's not there yet, is that correct?
Correct. It's in its first year as a club, so out of the 40 or so students that are participating, that's a mix of boys and girls.
Correct.
Are there competition, uh, uh, opportunities?
We are, we're just getting this going. So right now, it's just, let's get to the the bowling alley and see in the transportation and all that, let's figure all that stuff out.
How many kids show up on a regular basis before you would even make this a sport? So we, we have a two-year process where we do things as either volunteer or a club volunteer. And if we see consistent numbers for two consecutive years, and we look at trying to become a sport here for at least, like you said, a JV level. So it's a, it's a, it's a two to three-year process.
And they're both winter sports, girls and boys together. Interesting.
Yeah, what's what's really cool about this club is that it came from a staff member, you know, it's his idea, saying, hey, it's Phil McGovern, so I want to give him some credit. Um, he said, I think this is going to take off, you know, I'd really love to add this up. And, um, he started talking about this last spring, and now, you know, we had their first meeting a couple of weeks ago, so.
How often do they bowl, David?
Uh, they're trying to go at least once a month.
Okay. And where are they going?
Uh, the local alley in Lyons, so not too far away.
Okay.
Yeah, I got, I attended the first event, those 40-plus students, you know, about half girls, half boys. We went to the AMF in Lyons, and it was just fantastic. Again, big shout out to Mr. McGovern, you know, kids were into it, then we bowled for two, three hours. And, uh, you know, I think this is something serious and it's something that more than likely will stay and become a permanent staple in our B. It's outstanding, and they, Brendan, the whole team has done a good job with it.
For clarification, I don't know if this is what you intended, but is there opportunity for interscholastic competition? Or is this something that's going to be in-house as a club that continues? I'm just curious.
No, that's another good question. So I I see this as similar passes lacrosse and same thing with lacrosse. In the beginning, we were just worried about like getting the equipment on. Even our coaches had to kind of learn the game a little bit, and then it was just like intersquad scrimmages for that first year. And then that second year, we linked up with whoever we could to play. Um, even if they were participating in the IHSA season, they would just do maybe a scrimmage with us with our JV team or whatnot. So I think bowling would have that type of, um, path to go down in regards to next year, we can establish a small.
Exhibition matches.
Yeah, I guess my question is, does it exist within interscholastic in the area?
Are the IHSA?
It's an IHSA sport.
It's an IHSA sport.
Bowling is IHSA?
Yeah.
It's winter for both girls and boys.
So there you go. That would be the question that was really.
That's the question we wanted to ask.
It's an IHSA sport.
I'm actually a little surprised, but now that you're saying it, I actually.
So is so is fishing.
So I'm just curious because they're only meeting once a month, but lacrosse never met once a month. Lacrosse was meeting daily, you know, training, so.
For a season, only like two months of the school year, not that, not the whole school year.
But what does that look like for bowling? Are they meeting just once or is there like training for that?
No, so right now, this is just a strict, like, fun activity for kids to get involved in, no stress, no competitions, just an opportunity for kids to get together to bowl, um, to have kind of like some social, um, connections with other students outside of the school days. So that's going to be our focus right now. Um, I really want to take this kind of a slow process here to see, um, how it goes and see our consistency with participation, participation numbers, and then kind of go from there.
So I guess, you know, as a board, we've had a conversation in the past about, um, bringing on new sports because new sports are, you know, different coaches and everything else. Right now, I know it's just, it's a club right now, but if it were to get to that point where it would become a sport, I think that's another conversation where we say.
Certainly.
Do we want to move from offering 24 sports to 25 or whatever that is, or should we retire one that's not, you know, right?
You'll be part of the stipend discussion and all of that.
That's why we do a two-year process on that.
Yeah, so it's just not an automatic, you've been a club for two years, now you get to be a sport. I think there's a whole different conversation.
We made that very clear to the stipend committee when we met, uh, this past summer, at the board ultimately had the final. And at that point, what we do is if we, if we keep it a club, we can put them on our stipend schedule for an activity, but not an ex, not on our athletic schedule. So there's some different avenues, but that's why we use a two-year process.
I think it sounds good to gauge the interest right now, just where they're at, right? This is all, at the end of the year, we'll know, did 40 students continue to show up in April?
Right. Well, it can be a club forever, right? I mean, it can continue to be a thriving club. It doesn't necessarily have to become a competitive sport.
Sure. And we'll know if this increases our participation rates, and that's part of the benefit of offering it in the first place. Over a two-year period, we get the opportunity to see how that impacts.
So they'll monitor it, they'll get back to us, uh, how the engagement goes. It could, it could remain a club, it could convert into an IHSA sport if the board wants to go there, but that's not right tonight.
Nope. Well, no, in the spring of '25.
Thank you for that.
Twenty-four.
That's what I was going to say.
Twenty-four. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite up next, Assistant Principal for Student Services, Beth Augustine, and our Director of Special Education, Mr. Kevin Baldus.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hello.
No masks this year.
Yeah, no masks, that's right. Look at the report from last year.
Freshmen on track, is that where we're starting?
We are starting with freshman on track, um, with an increase from 95.4 up to 96.2. So it was nice to see an increase, um, this year. 384 students for the class of 2025 are on track with 15 students not on track. Give you a little bit of a breakdown of who those students are, the demographics. And looking at the names of those students, most of them had struggles academically with attendance and with social emotional concerns. They were definitely students that we worked, tried to work with through a small team, um, trying to put interventions in place, everything from parent meetings to looking at schedules, looking at placement. So the hope is that with summer school and some additional supports, we will get those students back on track so that they are able to graduate with their peers. Looking at steps to continue to increase our freshman on track, one of our biggest interventions, and I know it's already been mentioned, is Panorama, which is our new platform to track data. I will say I love it. It's amazing.
We love it.
We love it. We love it. We love it.
It's good to have the positive feedback.
There was a link in the board packet. Uh, I don't know if anyone took a little, uh, look at that. It's two and a half minutes long if you want to see it. It gives you a really quick glimpse of the dashboard. We can't actually use our dashboard. But I think Mary Ann could hit the link if you want to see it or you want to look at it at your own, on your own time, but it will show you how we can look at attendance, behavior data, SEL data. It's live data, it's being pulled from Skyward, it's totally up to you.
Mary Ann, can you hit the link real quick?
It's literally two and a half minutes.
Yeah, I think that would be good to share.
Okay.
I I watched it in the board book.
As I say, I saw the link and didn't click it.
You gotta turn the sound up probably in the mirror. I don't know, at the bottom right.
Looks like it was up. Yeah. And then just expand it and hit play.
Yes.
Expand in the right corner.
Yeah.
Over there.
The little box.
The blue corner, right.
In the blue box, lower right.
There you go.
And then just.
The students tab is where you'll see academics, attendance, behavior, SEL, and assessment data for all the students you support in one place.
Is this supposed to be current?
This view defaults to the end of year, but you can toggle to change that timeframe.
It's Mary Ann's volume, huh?
Hover over each section of an indicator bar to learn what each color represents.
Okay, maybe if you can, there you go, maybe you can start.
Hover over each section of an indicator bar to see academic data for particular subjects.
Do you mind just starting it over, Mary Ann, just so that they see that?
Sel data is powered by the most. Expand the academics bar. The students tab is where you'll see academics, attendance, behavior, SEL, and assessment data for all the students you support in one place. Attendance, behavior, SEL, and assessment data for all the students you support in one place. This view defaults to the end of year, but you can toggle to change that timeframe. Hover over each section of an indicator bar to learn what each color represents. Expand the academics bar to see academic data for particular subjects. SEL data is powered by the most recent Panorama survey results. You can explore the tooltip here to learn more about the cut points. Dark green indicates students who've self-reported high in all survey topics. Light green indicates students who've self-reported high in at least half of the topics. Yellow indicates students who've self-reported high in less than half of the topics. And red indicates students who've self-reported high in none of the topics. Like the academic bar, you can expand the SEL bar to break the data down by particular survey topics. For more information about SEL and the SEL survey, click surveys at the top of the page. To see only the students that meet certain criteria, simply click on the colors and bars you're most interested in. For example, let's see students with no suspensions who attended more than 96% of school days and had a D or an F in math. I can filter this group of students further by demographic data such as grade level, race, ethnicity, special education status, and more. At the top, we see the current criteria selected and the number of students that meet them. Below, we see who those students are. During the school year, when data is updating nightly, the trending feature indicates whether a student has recently moved across one of these benchmarks. For example, you could see those students who recently improved their attendance. To see assessment data for all students you support, go to subject-specific pages in the top left. Here, you'll see assessment data alongside related coursework data. Again, you can click these bars to narrow in on the students you're most interested in supporting.
You can stop that when they're, instead of the, the teachers practice on their own.
So the fact that it's live data, it's being pulled from Skyward. So the fact that it's live data, it's being pulled from Skyward, attendance, behavioral referrals, current grades, and then Panorama is our place to track interventions. And we are utilizing it in small teams. I know case managers are utilizing it, the deans are utilizing it, the teachers have been trained. I know Kylie's going to talk about it a little bit further. So I just want to say thank you for giving us this incredible platform. It is really making the ability to see how students are progressing so much easier.
Do our staff, our faculties, do they have people come in and help them, you know, access more or even develop more, be able to use it or understand the data?
So they were trained a couple of weeks ago and honestly, Laura, it's so easy. Like you pull up a student and it's just there. I mean, all of your student's information, attendance, grades, SEL survey, PSAT data, STAR data, like it's just there. And so it gives a teacher an opportunity to see what's the disconnect. Like if a student is doing poorly in their class and his or her class, but yet they've scored well on STAR or PSAT, what's, you know, what's the disconnect? So it's just that easy to use.
Nice.
All the specialized case managers were trained at the beginning of the school year and they use that information for goal writing progress monitoring to the kids' IEPs as well. So they're using it actively in their job responsibilities.
And any student that comes through a small team, that's the first thing that we're doing is we're pulling up Panorama and seeing what other information we can find out about that student. We're also inputting all interventions. So we're tracking students who are in reading, students who are in algebra, extended algebra, algebra academic support, sophomore reading, students that were identifying for groups, students that were identifying for check-in and check-out, homework hangout. And when a teacher goes in, they can see those interventions. So they can see, we've identified a student for check-in and check-out. All the students who have been identified for tapestry. So we can pull up the whole roster of tapestry students and monitor their attendance, monitor their grades. Like it's phenomenal.
We lose all the administrative piece. It's nice.
Do students ever interact with Panorama or does it pull data from every other?
Students don't, the only interaction they ever have is taking that SEL survey. But the hope is that when students are meeting with, which we just finished the surveys, social workers and counselors and psychs are going through that data and determining groups. So it's really identifying our tier-two interventions. And we'll be reaching out to families and hopefully getting those groups started. But in addition to that, the counselors will be utilizing that information when they're meeting with their students individually for their classes for next year, which is crazy that they started that process today for current juniors. So they're able to pull up Panorama and, you know, have an additional conversation about where that student is at. And the questions are really more about like goal setting and time management and where do you feel like you're lacking in some of those soft skills and how do we build those in before you leave for college or whatever your post-secondary plans are, trade school, military work, whatever that might be. So it's great. Just again, using that fresh data and looking at these freshmen and especially monitoring very early. We're already looking at freshmen right now who are potentially not going to be on track, looking at those failures, trying to get teacher meetings set up, parent meetings. Is this a good tapestry referral? Is this a level change? Check-in, check-out, executive functioning?
I have a question. Where is the current freshman on track rate right now?
Well, you can't really judge that with it just being not necessarily, we do that the semester with the current.
Yes, I understand that it's a semester KPI, but I think I asked this last year and I'm gonna ask it again.
Okay.
How do we ensure that at the end of quarter one, we identify students who could potentially be off track for some, at the end of semester one?
Correct.
So that we catch them?
Yes.
And not let them fall off track? Because at this point, you could have Panorama and it could be great all you want, but if you're not able to report current freshman on track metrics, for me, that's a problem.
Okay.
Because it states here that one of the goals for increased freshman on track for the class of 2026, the Student Services Department will work closely and monitor at the end of each quarter.
Yep.
So since quarter one just ended, I was just curious where it currently is.
So I can get that for you for sure.
Thank you.
I did the, for specialized, it's eighty-eight percent right now.
Thank you.
So there's 51 students in, freshmen in specialized.
Thank you.
Yes.
And out of those is, that is those today. Did I remember that question?
Yes.
There are still some grade changes, to be honest with you, that are taking place?
And then my other, my follow-up question is, of those that are on track, how many of them have Ds? One D, two Ds, three Ds? I know it's what we use as the standard. I personally have a problem with it because as you know, a D is a very slippery slope. You're one homework assignment or one bad quiz away or one absence away from an F, right? So I've always, I've been working with freshman on track and the consortium since 2008, not a fan of it. I think we get too comfortable. So for example, like it's at 96%, 96.2% for 2022. My question still is, right, how many of those kids had Ds? And how is that going to affect their graduation?
You're saying of the 96 that made it?
Of the 96 that made it, according to the KPI, how many of those 96% students have a D, right? And why is a D acceptable? And I get that that's the standard, but if we want to continue to grow academically and we want to continue to expect, I think it goes into one of our goals, we should probably not be content with a D.
And I will definitely get you.
Thank you. I'm just, I get very curious about freshman on track at the end of quarter one.
Sure.
Because I think it's a very good indicator of what interventions need to be put in place so that we.
What I'm hearing you say for freshman on track more broadly defined?
Well, so I guess I'm just looking at it through my own professional lens. We would do freshman on track at the end of the quarter, of quarter one, knowing that the real metric isn't until semester one, but we monitored it.
Right. I guess because we are constantly monitoring students with receiving D and F reports every single week, every counselor receives that, and we're monitoring that through our small team process. And because it's changing so much, again, with grade changes, but I can certainly get, you know.
So then do teachers and counselors check in with parents who have, of students who have Ds?
With Ds, yeah. I mean, they should. They should. I mean, I can't answer to all teachers that they definitely should.
So then Beth, would this be, because your teachers within each department meet together, right? And so I imagine there would be some conversations with students that are at risk.
Yes, and I think Kylie's gonna talk a little bit more about that during her report about how teachers are utilizing data and like in their PLC time.
So maybe that would even answer some of your questions because I, do you meet every week? I know some schools have.
Small team meets every week.
Every week?
We have a team that meets Tuesdays and a team that meets Wednesdays.
So would that be on their agenda?
Do their students have either multiple Ds or?
Right. They're usually students that are, that are having multiple issues. We're talking, the deans are there with us as well. So we're talking, we go through students who are hospitalized, students that had suspensions. We have Tapestry give us updates on the students they're meeting with. Then we go through each counselor, students that are on their caseload that they have concerns about. And usually it's a combination of some academic attendance, social-emotional, to individually problem solve on a student that has just one F. I mean, we just wouldn't have time. So we're just like looking big picture. And then the counselors do a lot of that individual follow-up with teachers and students on their own. That's an expectation.
So Kylie, probably some type of reminder for teachers, then students at the quarter or at the progress report time, if Ds or Fs, teachers should be sending some type of communication out to parents. If, what I'm hearing Beth say is that, and I think I'm hearing, what I'm hearing Lorena say is, a student that has one F or one D wouldn't necessarily make it to small teams, but that's what Panorama is supposed to catch now. And the teacher should be emailing the parent and contacting the parent about the D or the F.
Well, the parent would know if they're watching their grades, right?
Yeah, that's like if they're watching the grades, just like they would know vaping's illegal if they read the handbook, right? I don't think everybody watches.
Right.
All right. So if we want to email their grades, and I think we can also let them know that, you know, we can't have double standards here. So we're saying that we intentionally want to make contact with parents when students are.
Well, we don't want to wait till they get to small teams and they have multiple Ds and Fs, right? So you would hope that a teacher with a D or an F in a class would be reaching out to a parent to say, your child is a D, is failing my class.
Is that a standard practice?
That's an expectation.
Yes.
That's been my experience, yes.
That parents should never see an F on a grade card and have that be the first time that they were aware that a student was in danger of failing. It's certainly something that I can reiterate absolutely.
Yeah. And again, the counselors are looking for patterns. So if a student, if, you know, a student shows up on an F list, you know, maybe the student missed a huge test because they were absent, sick at a sporting event. It's that pattern where consistently that student fails week after week, that they're, they are going to be doing some follow-up.
I would like us to be out of here before midnight, so please do not answer any of the questions that I'm about to present.
Okay.
Were those provided beforehand?
No. And that's why I'm saying, I think this is a much, it's actually a longer conversation over where we intersect on what this is. But when grading philosophy has a, an overwhelming spectrum, and I don't know if there are any competency-based or standards-based grading going on at this point, but that brings an all-new, all-new, different level of what any check-in point might be or might communicate at any given point in time. And there's a lot of different variables here that I think, based on what was said, the teachers should be communicating with parents on any level. And to ask this data to do more on a specific level, I think we just need more time to discuss what our intersections would be with that. And I'm happy to leave it at that because otherwise I will talk way too long.
Well, I guess my quick thought as the non-educator up here is that I think I rely on these reports to summarize the data we should be knowing. So I think based on some of this discussion, there's a different way to be looking at this in addition to the state requirement, which is freshman on track. And I hear Ms. Gaskas' concerns, if there's ways to beef up this report as opposed to us getting in the weeds on how exactly Ds and Fs are monitored or how exactly teachers are interacting. I think that would be my preference.
I don't think anyone's gonna disagree with the desire behind Ms. Gaskas'.
I really just wanted to know where freshman on track currently was. Thank you so much for.
And if I could just.
That was it. That was it.
I remember you asked this.
I asked it twice last year and someone was paying attention. Thank you so much.
And we're presenting our goal.
I was just curious again.
In our last year's data, we'll make sure that in November, we'll share some updated data, but we'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Until the board.
Should we move on to the next slide, the SAT, PSAT?
Good. Kevin, are you staying up with them or?
No, I'll just shift seats with you and then I'll come back when she jumps out.
I need you.
Tom.
Okay.
All right, let's get this party started.
You are Ms. Kylie, Assistant Principal, Critical Instruction.
We sure do. So, okay, starting off already. So the first thing is, at each of your seats, there is a new hard copy version of Performance Indicator 4 that has an updated Class of 2022 column. As a reminder to the board, before I start presenting, I'll give you the reminder that I myself learned going through the data. We measure this particular indicator on the percentage of our students who met or exceeded benchmark, but those students only who have an entrance exam score with us threw a PSAT score with us. So when I did my data on the first round, I used the wrong number. And so I needed to bring that number down. There were 326 students in the class of 2022 whom we had data for starting with their freshman year and ending through their junior year. So that's the way this data is always in this indicator reported. The class of 21 and 20 are there as comparison data. Those are the only two years prior to '22 that we reported this way. That's why there's only three. Ultimately, in my brain, I would do five. I would do a five-year snapshot. I want to start this sort of summary that I promise will be quick by saying that the class of 2022, I just want to flashback and give a little bit of a reminder, spent quarter four of their sophomore year at home mandated, spent quarter one of their junior year at home based on our return-to-learn plan, and then spent quarter two through four of their junior year optional. During quarter two, they could come in 25%. Then we opened that up because not so many kids were coming in. Quarter three was 50%. By quarter four, students could come in for as much time as they wanted to. But when we're talking about data that's reported from the class's junior year and they spent potentially all of that in their house, that's something that I at least have to say for information's sake going into this data. When you take a look at the year-over-year comparison from the class of 21 to 22, you will see that those students meeting benchmark in the ERW, so the English reading and writing, were at 71%, which is a 4% drop from the previous year. In the math benchmark, the class of 2022 dropped about seven percentage points from the class of 21 down to 50%. The kind of silver lining in that story is when you look at state and national trends, we're seeing the same thing across the state and across the nation with regard to when the pandemic really starts to show up on scores. The Illinois ERW benchmark dropped about eight percentage points statewide. And in math, the drop was about seven percentage points. So I'm happy that we are below that threshold. The national threshold for English was a drop of about 10 percentage points and the drop in math nationally was nine percentage points. So we're seeing a pandemic dip across the board, certainly. When you look at those students who achieved expected growth but not benchmark, you're seeing a dip year-over-year for us as well. In the math area, you're seeing that math drop from 29% to 25%. It definitely could be my bias in the fact that I am a former English teacher, but I can certainly understand a math dip there. Again, when we are talking about the junior year, we are talking about our math department very intentionally builds into their curriculum, a lot of SAT support and test prep that is woven right into their instruction, specifically at the Algebra II TRIG level that junior year. Students who are not in class for that experience, that's very different when you're learning math at home through a screen than maybe when you're learning it face-to-face. So we do see a 4% drop there. Again, something that is pretty steady nationwide. We saw that dip also. There was a recent College Board information session where Trevor Packer, the head of the College Board, mentioned the AP test impact even in 20 and 21. And we're finally starting to see it rebound in the '22 school year, which we evidenced earlier with our perfect score. So on the next page of this section, the class of 2022, students who met benchmark and/or expected growth. So that's really the money number. That's the chart with the blue highlight that is really the anchor of this performance indicator. So for the ERW benchmark, 79% of the 326 test takers in the class of 2022 either met benchmark or they met the growth that we expected of them. In math, that number is slightly lower. The students in the class of 2022 who met benchmark and/or that expected growth, there were 203 of them, so that represented 62% of their class. We know that that blue chart informs the red chart right under it because that as the number of students who meet or exceed goes up, we hope that that other number will shrink. So that number in red, we had 21% of that class of 2022 who did not make benchmark in English and they didn't make their growth either. They might have grown some, but they didn't meet what that expected growth was for us. And then 38% of that class met neither math benchmark nor that expected growth. So all of those charts in combination, as I said, add up to the fact that we are seeing some pandemic impact now. And we are adjusting as a result of that. We started this year because I feel like this is sort of the first year that we feel away from it enough to really wrap our heads around what changes we need to make. So we start this year with vertical alignment again in math and in English, looking at state standards, Common Core standards, and what our curriculum is. We've really also spent the first quarter getting teachers into data more so than we have done in the past. Beth mentioned the Panorama dashboard. When we had Institute Day on Friday, all of the teachers had a guided exploration of Panorama. So some really specific things that they needed to go into Panorama and find out about kids so that they're getting used to using that dashboard and accessing different pieces of information that might be helpful to them. We also are so fortunate now to have STAR at grades nine through 11. And one of the And one of the things that Dr. Freitas and the administrators and I heard pretty consistently from our instructional coaches in our leadership council was more teachers than just English and math teachers want to be able to get their hands on that data and really see what it means for their curriculum and for their instruction. So we also did a guided review of STAR data on Institute Day where I was able to pull from my access lens some global reports so that teachers could see the entirety of the freshman class, the entirety of the sophomore class or junior class, and where they fall. What is their predicted meet-or-exceed benchmark status? How many of them need interventions? And then we were even able in STAR to look at specific Common Core standards. So I can drill down to a reading-for-information standard at the 10th grade level, and I can show my entire faculty how the 10th graders performed on that specific standard. When I provide that information to different departments, now if I'm a social studies teacher, I know that I can support reading for information, and I know that this percentage of the class needs that support. So we're engaged with data in a whole new way at this point. And so first quarter has really been about collecting that first STAR screening data and using that data to inform our instruction and to make people more comfortable with what that looks like. A teacher shared a meme with me recently that said, for educators in the room, you can't intervene your way out of a tier-one problem, right? So you first have to make sure that your curriculum and what you're offering to all of your students meets the needs and closes those gaps. That's where the vertical alignment comes in, and all subjects being able to review what that data looks like. Now, we have been given the opportunity from the district to put some intervention hours behind what we are learning from STAR for our current students so that we can make better decisions for this class and so that we can do more to strengthen growth. And so what we're at now is we have 50% essentially, roughly, of each class, nine, 10, and 11, who are below what STAR considers the benchmark to be on target for college and career readiness. In both reading and math, it's about 50% across the board. So we have spent the past month or so collecting those kids, getting their schedules, looking at what are the access points in their schedules, also looking at what are the specific skills that those kids need? Is this a kiddo who needs intervention in reading and in math? Which one is more serious? Where do we put them? We have one access point, what intervention do we do for them? So it's kind of been a frenzy of getting the intervention system ready to go. We have our second round of STAR testing the week of Halloween, and there will be several teachers that week cursing my name, the fact that we're doing it the week of Halloween, so that we can then confirm the students so that we know, based on two data points, we are dispatching intervention in the appropriate place. That's probably the most significant thing that we are doing to move these numbers, is putting the right information in teachers' hands and then supporting teachers' ability to act on that information in their classroom. And we've really made a conscious effort this school year about providing intentional time for a review of data and then also providing teachers with professional development opportunities, strategies. Our Blended Learning Cohort presented at Institute Day, for example. And those are people that know, here's how you differentiate in a classroom, because that's what blended learning is all about. So this year, more so than ever, I think we have the data, and we're being very intentional with how we use that data across the board in all departments to pull up those numbers.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're going to be, the board approved the budget. We put additional money in, and I know Dr. Spatana did that as well after our discussions for specific English and math intervention.
Yes.
And so you're saying, once we finish the second assessment next week?
We'll have confirmed those are the students we want to go in. We have, we have those groups right now, based on our first round of data, which we took at the very beginning of the school year. What I don't want to happen is for a student to have thought of that test at the first beginning of the school year, like, mm, I don't care about this. I just got back from summer, like, whatever. We really want to know for sure that that first score wasn't an anomaly before I put money and mind power behind those students. So as soon as we get those scores, we're ready to go and spend the rest of the semester intervening. Then we will screen again in January, and we'll see who can move in the intervention or who can move out of the intervention, what adjustments we need to make so that we can continue then through the third quarter up and through the fourth quarter. Yes.
And then with the Panorama, Ms. Augustine and Kylie, Ms. Lundquist, we make sure we get continued support. I know they just had two or three, the teachers just had two or three hours at the last Institute Data Review Data in their departments, but I want to make sure it's something we're giving them time to do with PLCs throughout the quarter.
Yeah, at the beginning of the year, we structured PLCs such that we identify specific data meetings. We started that practice last year. And so we kind of direct that conversation toward like, this is a point that you should be discussing STAR. And again, providing those opportunities with those guided questions and that intentional time. And Beth Teemed did a nice job when we were in those departments and departments were receiving training. Student Services is essentially a big group of experts on Panorama. So having them there with the teachers and having them always available to support teachers as needed is a really, is a big asset in this whole kind of year of new, of new things, new stuff. It's all wonderful for our kiddos.
All right, we have one more goal to get into, Dan.
Yes, last one.
I don't know, that felt pretty good to me.
So, and students, if you have any questions, please jump in. Let me do.
So I just, you know, for us as a board, and you know, thank you very much, Kylie. The work is really great, and it sounds really exciting what you're doing with this new tool. And I think us as a board to not get in the weeds, we're not in the weeds. When we look at the like 50% benchmarks, maybe at one point, you know, the conversation or the questions come from me is, as a school, is 50% good? And how does that compare to other schools around us? And, you know, do we, should we be expecting or hoping that, you know, with enough resources that staff has, they do their magic? You know, you've got your magic going. We'd want to see that grow, and what is a reasonable goal we might want to hit? You know, how are we comparing with that? So I think for me right now, you know, I'm seeing 50%. I'm feeling a little like, hmm, that's kind of low, maybe we should be higher, but I don't know, maybe we need some information.
I think the 50% is that we have only 50% of kids meeting benchmark right now.
Right.
So the next.
At the August, like literally within the first week of school when we tested them.
So when we test them again in October, if we're still at 50, those 50 that are not meeting are going to be getting these interventions to raise that number.
So I think, so how does that compare? Maybe we need to hear that from like administration.
STAR is not, STAR is not something that like where they go and say, oh, X school is doing this, Y Y school is doing. It's strictly our kids.
Just our kids.
It's an in-school, it's an, it's an in-school quarterly assessment that we're using to measure our kids' progress.
But the benchmark, this.
The state benchmark?
Yeah, so is only 50% of our students meeting the state benchmark?
It's a, it's a, it's a college readiness benchmark that STAR sets, but it's not the SAT benchmark.
It's a predictive scale.
Predictive scale.
That STAR uses to say, at this point, 50% of these students are on pace to meet, to make benchmark.
Right.
At the August screening. What we hope, in theory, is that when we get to that October, end of October screening, some of those kiddos will drop off. That's what we hope, is that the number shrinks as the year goes on.
The number will increase, the number will increase, not drop off.
Well, the number of kid, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I meant the number of kids who needed intervention. The number of kids should increase who are meeting benchmark as we progress through the year. And then any of them that don't, those are the ones that we're scooping up to give them the interventions.
So I think we as a board maybe at a different time need to kind of just even think about ultimately, and I know we have COVID, and I know we have some adjustments and tools. What would it look like, you know? Because if we find out only half of our students after SAT are making, you know, benchmark, that doesn't sit well to me. We're an excellent school. We want our students to be prepared to go to college and succeed in college. And at a later date or something, as this is coming in, I think maybe getting some information about ultimately what kind of targets we want to be looking at.
I think we're going to want to see trended data, right? That's what you're looking for is, is over time. So I think, I think we'll get that with regular reports back to the board.
Yeah, what's a higher goal, should we be at a higher goal? Or what is an expectation of a school that's doing well?
But what they're telling you is, this is the score from the kids coming in the very first week. And, and let's wait till they come and get this August score to see.
October score.
The October score, sorry, see where we are, and then, you know.
I think it's also important, we should make sure, I'm sure you guys have already thought of this, but educating the students that they need to take the little STAR assessment series so they're not just clicking boxes because it's STAR, it's not ACT, it's not SAT, it's maybe something. So you also have to look at like how valid the participation in the assessment is, right? And if they start to find out like, wait, now I got to give up my lunch because I got to go to this intervention.
All of a sudden, the scores go way up.
Right?
I mean, this is our first snapshot. I think we need to kind of spend some time and get some additional data. I, I think it's great that you're able to produce this in a.
And I'm happy to provide, you know, we give STAR, we're giving it four times in the year. I'm happy to provide kind of what that tracking looks like in terms of that progression because it does come very easy through the system.
That'll be helpful.
And before we get to graduation rate, I know from, from my perspective on the board, I'm sure that if there's something you need to help these kids, that that information will filter up to the superintendent, to the board, on how the board can help. That's our ultimate job, is to provide what we can for these kids, whether it's 50% or it's going to be 80% or whether they're not on track or not on track. Help those kids and let us know what we can do to help you.
Thank you.
From my perspective at this end.
No, no, I, I would agree from the middle of the table, and I.
I need to be reminded of that.
Okay, graduation rate.
All right, graduation rate. So we had an increase from 51, 51, wow, that would be terrible, 95.1 to.
That would be a number.
95.5, which was actually a little bit of an increase from my projection from this time last year. I was off about 0.9%, and I think the good news was, was we didn't lose any additional students last year who dropped out. So the drops that we had last year, we were able to hold on to every one of those students, which was, is a testament to the work that everyone did. We had five students not graduate in May and were able to attend summer school. And from the class of 2021, there were 19 students that were considered non-grads by the state. Nine of those 19 were special education students, but eight of those nine met their graduation requirements and were considered graduates but chose to stay on for transition services. And they can do that until the day before they turn 22. But for whatever reason, the state does not recognize them as being part of the graduating class. And then I just.
Do they ultimately go into the graduating class once they finish their services at 22?
So if you look up at the top where the adjusted cohort is up at the top, so if a student chooses to take their diploma in the following year, then they're in the adjusted cohort, but then it doesn't continue to adjust. The adjusted cohort only happens the next year, so.
That's unfortunate for.
There'll be some kids that will go on a transition for maybe one, two, three years. It's all individualized, so somebody might take your diploma after that fifth year, when you're in transition, or the second. It all depends on.
And only adjust after one, within one year after their graduation.
Correct. And so that will catch any, any student who chooses to leave transition and take their diploma. And also if we have any students who return, return as fifth-year seniors to, who have not met their graduation requirement, we can include those students in our adjusted cohort.
That's consistent across the state.
The 95.5, does that include the kids we graduate in the summer shortly after?
It does. But our, if you include our transition students, our graduation rate would really, really be 97.3 if you added back in the students who met graduation requirements but chose to stay on for services.
Thank you.
So if they take their diploma, they can't, they don't have access to the services then?
Correct. Yes.
So unfortunate.
Yes, they stay on. So then I just gave you a breakdown for actually, for a projection for the class of 2023. Students who have already dropped and left to pursue their GED. There are 11 students that we are anticipating that will stay on for transition, a student who will potentially take a certificate of attendance. I was a little surprised at the number of drops, eight students who have already dropped. And so I think it's going to be really important that we hold on to all of our students, just as we did last year. When I looked back at the names of those students and when it happened, the majority of them, it happened during that remote time because the pandemic hit when they were freshmen, that second or semester of their freshman year and coming back sophomore year. Those kids that were already just disengaged, disenfranchised, unmotivated, was like, what am I doing this for? And you know, there are times where they can come back. So if they do decide to re-enroll and meet their credits, they are still able to be counted in our graduation rate. The hope is, if you add back our transition students, that we could still be around 95.8, maybe close to 96% for graduation rate for next year. So I'll continue to monitor and.
Quick question, and only because you added the racial demographics for freshmen off-track or on-track, what was that breakdown for the 19 that were considered non-graduates?
We have to go back and get that information.
Just, just for the sake of consistency? And I'm, and I'm genuinely curious to see what.
The ethnic breakup?
Yep.
I'm sorry, myself, I don't know. Okay, no other questions? Thank you. And before, before, you guys could.
Okay.
Just before everybody steps out, I want you to get home with your families. We do have the district goal update. So I think the board has seen tonight, you know, the SMART goal for like with the STAR and the Panorama through Kylie and Beth's presentation and Kevin's presentation, you know, the steps that are being taken on the board SMART goal with the dashboard. The second SMART goal was the two-way engagement. And as I discussed, we're doing the survey in November. That's going to go out to all residents. A paper copy will go out to all stakeholders that are not active parents or students or staff members in the school. And then the SMART goal in regards to diversity, equity, inclusion. Dr. Freitas touched on that briefly during his principals' report. And we have our next Delt meeting tomorrow, where the, I believe it's up to 24 members from the school, whether it's administration, counselors, support staff, that are working on our equity plan. And then, you know, Ms. Matana gave you an update on the things she's doing with the, with the financials. So the only, we have not established a committee yet of, to do our facility group. I'm going to probably focus on that second semester. So I just wanted, before they leave, if there were any other questions. There were no questions submitted, but I think they did a good job during their presentations tonight and their reports, touching on the goals as well. Is the board okay with that?
I like keeping this as a placeholder on the, on the agenda, but I think you're right.
No, we'll, and we'll update it as we do it, but I don't think if there's no questions submitted or there's no big, you know, initiative taking place. Thank you, everybody. Nice job tonight.
Thank you, thank you. The audit reports, the annual financial report, first read.
Yes, this is provided for the board for a first read. The audit serves four purposes. It fulfills our annual requirement for the state, reviews internal controls in the district, verifies that the district has complied with regulations and grant requirements, and also summarizes the district's financial position. For the board's information, the audit must be submitted to the state by October 15th, unless an extension is filed with the state. In the past 11 years, we've, that I've been here, we've filed an extension every year to give the board time to review the audit as well as to comply with board policy 4:80, which is to have the auditor come and give a presentation. So our auditor, Chris Scelup, will do that at the November 15th board meeting. So I would encourage you between now and then to review the audit. And if you have questions, please submit them in advance. I would focus, if the audit is overwhelming, so there's a lot of information, I would focus on the summary of the audit, which is the management's discussion and analysis, and that's in the beginning of the audit. Lastly, there are two audits provided. We do our annual audit, and then additionally, the district is required to conduct a single audit due to receiving 750. audit due to receiving seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more in federal awards, um, during the previous fiscal year. Last year was the first year we had to do it. Uh, we have to do it again this year. Um, and moving forward, um, we'll have to reanalyze since we won't be receiving any S or funds for COVID, whether or not we meet that threshold.
This is a first read, everyone can review it, we'll have the auditor here at the next meeting.
Correct.
Nice job, Kristen, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion items from any members of the board? Hearing none, moving on to old business. Uh, we don't have any life safety items this evening, but we do have the inter-fund loan from working cash.
What's the page number, Kristen?
Board book page one ninety-five. Uh, so the board has seen this, uh, at the last meeting, um, so I am asking for approval tonight. Um, but we're asking for an inter-fund loan from working cash fund because the district expects to receive the second installment of the twenty twenty-one Cook County real estate taxes between five and six months, uh, later than the historical due date of August first. Um, so we're asking for an inter-fund, uh, loan from working cash fund to both the education fund and the debt fund, uh, ser- uh, debt service funds, excuse me. Um, I'm making a recommendation that we, um, that the board approves a, a loan from working cash to the education fund of three point five million, um, and from the working cash fund to debt service of one million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Um, upon receipt of, uh, the anticipated tax money, the township treasurer is authorized to immediately repay the inter-fund loans to the working cash fund. Um, and, uh, I, I did reference that I've attached the cash flow analysis. I apologize, that's back on the board book page eleven, if anybody wanted to go back and repeat that. But I am looking for approval tonight, uh, to make this inter-fund loan.
And these are both not to exceed amounts based on the estimates provided. Any questions?
The Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois approves the resolution in substantially the form presented to the board to loan monies from the working cash fund to the education fund and the debt service fund is presented in the October twenty-five, twenty twenty-two board agenda packet.
We have a second. Second.
And so.
Ms. Ruska.
Ms. Ruska.
Yes.
And so this will just put the money over so we can pay our bills. And I know somebody asked last time if we should put all the money over, but if there were ever, if there's going to be a need, and, and the next meeting, we could put more over. But I would anticipate if the bills are being, um, online November fifteenth, that we will get money in December.
I would anticipate.
People will pay them ahead of time and then all the mortgage companies will do it right at the due date. So we should be getting a, a pretty good windfall in December. And then, but the resolution says that as soon as all that money comes in, the money will be transferred back to the working cash.
As community members, they would, you would want to pay your taxes before the first year so you could claim them on your income tax, correct?
I don't give him income tax advice, but we're in a state where the SALT applies and your, your state and local taxes are limited to ten thousand, so.
But if you paid them after January first, I'm saying.
They would, they would, on the cash basis, they would be deductible in the next year. You'd have to speak to your tax advisor on that.
I'm not asking legal.
So we have a motion, we have a second. I think we're ready for a roll call on this, please.
Mr. Durkin.
Bill?
Bill, are you there? We might have lost him.
Ready.
Oh, yes, everybody, yes. Thank you, Bill.
Ms. Gaskin.
Yes.
Ms. Ruska.
Yes.
Ms. Durkin.
Yes.
Ms. Jurkew.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you and thanks for all the, the work on that, Dr. Spatina. Um, IASB resolutions, I don't think we're in a position to review them this evening unless I stand corrected. Do we want to go and discuss them? Ms. Ruska, do you want to speak to them briefly?
You, you have some work you want us to do in closed session. Do you want us to just review this at the next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be my suggestion, the next meeting on the agenda will have, um, the auditor, obviously, but a slightly lighter agenda.
Yeah, and my, I looked at them, they're odd. They're definitely different than they have been in the past year. My only suggestion when you read them is try to, try to be empathetic to the entire state. You have to remember that there are eight hundred and sixty-five districts. We don't look anything like downstate Illinois. And some of these are coming from other districts, um, that have a very different scenario than we do. And so just kind of read them with an open eye. And I'll only, you know, give one example where, um, so as you read them, you can kind of see them differently because I have sat in those, um, meetings and heard the discussions for the last sixteen years. One was they were talking about, um, gun dealers, anybody who could be considered a gun dealer and they wanted to expand the space. And the ISAB said, do not support that. And it sounds odd, why wouldn't we want to support that? Well, Walmart is considered a gun dealer because they sell guns and ammunition. And in Southern Illinois, Walmart is like sometimes the only store where you get groceries, food, everything. And it might be in, you know, closer proximity than this particular, you know, um, bill or whatever this suggestion was. And so we have to kind of think about if our boots were, you know, in Southern Illinois and the only business around there is Walmart and that does everything. And Walmart and Fleet Farm, both of them are, you know, considered gun dealers. Certainly they're not, you know, out there on the street peddling this. That resolution probably doesn't fit this scenario for Southern Illinois. So just kind of read these with an open, you know, with a, with a view of the state in mind.
But just to confirm, this board needs to take a, it's a, it's a vote, it's a suggested vote on, on, on all of these resolutions and how we feel they represent our district? Or are you suggesting they should be more broadly interpreted?
Well, they should be more broadly because what will happen, the, the Illinois Association of School Boards is going to lobby, um, our state senators, whether or not that should be a bill that affects all of Illinois. And sometimes what I see often is Chicago or people in big cities who have a lot of resources in a very different situation interpret the world through their own eyes. And we, and we don't always have the best interest of the rest of the state in mind.
So I think we can probably defer some of this discussion to our, our next meeting. I think everyone should go back and, and make sure they're familiar with the purpose of the IASB resolutions and what the audience is. And moving to the, the conference, Ms. Ruska would act as the representative from the board and carry this board's preference for these various resolutions, correct?
Right.
So, and, and if I could offer you up, if anyone has any questions in the interim to reach out to you on the IASB process? Is everyone comfortable with that and we can move on to the fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. The school maintenance project grant.
Uh, this is a second read and I'm asking for, uh, board approval tonight. But to refresh your memory, the school maintenance project grant is a dollar-for-dollar matching program providing awards up to fifty thousand dollars to school districts exclusively for maintenance and upkeep of buildings and structures for educational purposes. Um, we are required to provide a match, uh, of the fifty thousand. I am requesting in our grant application, um, money for upgrading the lighting in the auditorium to LED lighting. Um, the district has received this grant in the past, uh, most recently in February of twenty twenty-two for bathroom partitions and electric charging stations and then as well as, uh, in twenty twenty for our roof, uh, replacement project. We are requesting, um, the maximum, uh, which is fifty thousand dollars. And this grant does require board approval before I can submit the grant.
Prospect of getting it?
Um, usually it's very good, um, but our previous grant is still open because we haven't completed, uh, the work on the charging station. So I don't know if that will impact our current application or not.
Any additional questions?
And we haven't completed because of supply chain issues.
Correct. Right. Ms. Gaskin, would you read the motion?
Um, the Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois approves the school maintenance project grant application as presented in the October twenty-five, twenty twenty-two board agenda packet.
So I can.
You have a second for Mr. Van Horst for the roll call, please.
Ms. Gaskin.
Yes.
Ms. Ruska.
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Durkin.
Yes.
And Ms. Salas.
Yes. Do we have any new business this evening? I don't believe so. Visitor statements, second opportunity, there's no, no one present. We had no discussion items. Do we have any consideration of items for future meetings? Ms. Ruska.
Could we, um, come early, maybe one meeting and see the new cameras? Like, you, you're saying it's really cool to see what that looks like?
We are scheduled to do our annual meeting, bi-annual meeting with the union, uh, next meeting. So if you wanted to come a few minutes earlier, we'll actually be meeting in the alumni round, just right next to the camera room.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Thank you. Any other items, right? That'd be cool to see. Um, matters for closed session, we have appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. We have student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale or lease of real property, probable, imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations and school safety. Can I have a motion, please?
Does that cover the, uh, the board, the board vacancy in that list?
Probably should add that, just to be safe.
Right, it was, it was on the electronic agenda. That's a good point though, Mr. Welch. Um, under matters for closed session would also be discussion around, um, appointment of a future board member. That would be A.
May I?
Mm-hmm.
The Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the October twenty-five, twenty twenty-two board agenda packet.
Wait a second.
Second.
Wait a second and a roll call for closed session, please.
Ms. Ruska.
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Durkin.
Yes.
Ms. Gaskin.
Yes.
Ms. Salas.
Yes. And we are adjourned.